Seven o'clock on the 28th of July. Planning and zoning commission is called to order. First, on our agenda, not on the agenda this evening, a couple of things. First, Mayor Mahoney has joined us this evening and asked to say a few words before we begin the meeting. So, Mr. Mayor, over to you.
Thank you very much, sir. Quick message to you guys. Chairman Brown, Vice Chair Blackwelder, Cindy Kathleen, Janet, and Jeff. I sound like my mother whipping off four children's names all at once. But I want to thank you on behalf of the town council and the citizens of Chesapeake Beach for all the work that you've done and continue to do. Obviously, what you do is very important. You're planning the future of the town. I don't know that there's more important work being done right now in town or has been for a while. So, I thank you. The fact that you're doing this work and dedicating your personal time during a pandemic is just remarkable. It just really, really is. I don't think, you know, you're realizing yet how special you are. But I realize it, and you are very special. And I feel honored to know you all as friends and colleagues. I mean that from the bottom of my heart. So, I just want to thank you for persevering, you know, through all of this and for doing what you're doing for our town. And that's really it. I'll probably start filling up if I keep talking. But I'm going to go ahead and let you do your work. But I wanted to take some time to just really express my gratitude and that of my colleagues on the council and the entire town. So, thank you very much. Keep at it, guys.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Good morning.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you. This month, at the town council meeting, Vice Chairman Blackwelder represented the commission. I didn't know if you would like to make a few comments about that.
Well, I only got one question. And the question was whether or not we finish and get the code and the plan to the town council by the deadline. And my answer was essentially that depended on Chris and how well we got, you know, what the items that the town needs and items that are important to our fellow residents into the plan in a way that we felt we could develop in a positive way. And so, that was my answer. And I think that we decide the answer to that question as a board. And hopefully, it will be soon, and we can work closely. And that really was the only question that I got. And I did take the time to thank the town council and the mayor for their support of us and of the moratoria that gave us the time to have these conversations. I took the liberty of doing that on the behalf of all of us because I know I appreciate it, and I feel like you guys appreciate it, too. Pretty much, that summarized my big role in that meeting. And I also thank Chairman Brown for being so organized and methodical and keeping us on track. So, that was the extent of my comment. So, hopefully, if you guys want to comment on anything I commented on, or feel free.
Okay, thank you. And if I were really organized, my camera would work, but that's...
No, that's a technical issue.
I thought I had fixed it, but it's on the blink again. Let's see. Chris, I believe you're on the line. You had sent out an email, a copy of an email from Ms. Peggy Hartman. Did you want to make any comments, further comments, on that?
Just to summarize the comments I put in the email, and they were... I was struck by how relevant the comments were and how they really spoke to the various issues that the planning commission's been addressing, particularly about the sea level rise impacts to existing development and the impact of individual decisions to raise land or to build other structures on the community's well-being in terms of how water is managed, where it flows, where it backs up. So, I just, it was just a perfect example of what's happening now. And if there's any doubt that this big issue is not relevant to Chesapeake Beach, these types of emails help to spell it. So, that's all. I'm glad, I thank you for all for the positive comments. I see that you all thought it was a relevant and important email. And Ms. Hartman actually said that she intends to start showing up at our meetings and participating throughout the remaining months of the process.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. The first item on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any comments? Well, first, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Okay, and let's see.
I'm checking it.
There's a second. Any discussion? No discussion? Oh, go ahead.
Um, I don't see the minutes attached to the agenda, and I can't remember when I read them.
It was about two weeks ago, I think, that Sharon sent them out. I had to find them in my email. Sharon, are you on the line here?
Yes, I'm here.
Do you...
Yes, I thanked you now.
I'm sure you did, Sharon. I went on vacation early in the...
Yeah, I got them.
They were attached to the package. They were attached to the package that was sent out to you with everything.
I got it, Ms. Sharon.
Okay. All right, well, I'll just trust you guys on the minutes. Yeah, I saw them.
Okay, so, we have a second to on the agenda. All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, unanimous, the agenda's approved. Approving the minutes for the June 23 planning and zoning meeting. Most of us have them. Is there any... Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make the motion to approve the minute.
I second it.
Second, thank you, Janet. Any discussion on the minute? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the minutes for June 23?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Okay. The next item on the agenda is public comment on any item on the agenda. A public comment will be accepted either by phone or on this Zoom. There are two-minute limit on comments received. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment from the public on tonight's agenda?
Hello. I guess I am part of the public. Um, I don't, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but do I make comments here or at the end?
Well, wait. First, if you could state your name and your address, you can comment now, and you can comment at the end, too, if you'd like.
Okay, sure. Um, so, my name is Maggie Bennett. I'm a Chesapeake Beach town resident. I live in Richfield Station on 2259 Sandsbury Drive. I am also here on the behalf of the Sierra Club. I am an intern there for the summer and more specifically, a part of the Ready For 100 Clean Energy Renewable Team. When I was reading your 2040 vision statement for Chesapeake Beach, which I found was like very impressive, I noticed that some participants contributed ideas about infrastructure and utilities. More specifically, they wanted to see wind and solar innovations in energy. I believe that the Ready For 100 team can do just that, especially if the town council or even the mayor signs the Clean Energy Resolution. A lot of other mayors and town council members in Maryland are beginning to sign this resolution. And this resolution doesn't mean you have to buy anything like wind turbines or solar panels. It's just a renewable source to think about. And, yeah, so, it can lead to cutting carbon to prevent climate change. And I know sea level rising is important to you guys as well, especially because I was able to watch YouTube video about the last meeting, about how flooding is very important to you guys, also making sure that you rise up the lands of Chesapeake Beach and protect the lands. So, yeah, thank you for your time and consideration, as well as letting me sit in on this meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment on the agenda for tonight? Okay, hearing none. We're going to review the revisions to the draft comprehensive plan. I guess I can confirm that everyone, all the commissioners have received the chapters 1 through 10 now with some revisions yesterday on chapter 10 and some additional maps. Does anyone not receive those? Okay, hearing none. I have my chairman's list of issues that distributed. I hope, I hope you've had a chance to read through it. I think, for the most part, we can go through those pretty quickly. Vice Chairman Blackwelder put together most of it. But let me begin with, on my page one, questions for the commission. The first one is probably overtaken by events. The weather 2 and 2 include the town's flood and sea level rise action plan framework. I believe that's already been done. If you look at the appendix at the end of the draft, Chris mentions a framework. Is that not right, Chris?
Yes, that's right. It's in the implementation section, actually, under studies.
So, from my point of view, that's taken care of. And since I put that on the list, is there any other discussion on that? Okay, the second item was... Yes, go ahead.
Um, is that the plan that was developed between North Beach and Chesapeake Beach that's going to be included? Or is it planned that... What plan is that?
That's going to be the, that's the plan that is being funded by the state, has been awarded already to the town. And we developed a work scope in combination with North Beach and the state of Maryland. So, it's just one and the same. And so, when we refer to a study throughout the document, we're actually referring to that. And effectively, this would be the first iteration of that study. And I suspect it's going to be a continual evolving planning effort for many years. But you're right, Larry Laurie, it's just one study, and this is it. Although it's called different, it's referred to in different ways depending on what the chapter's speaking to. It's the same study.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, is that already published? Just curious. I mean, I agree it should go in.
No, no, it's not done yet. The only thing that's done is a basic work scope, and that has been published with, approved by the town council as part of the grant agreement. But it's hardly worth including in a comprehensive plan. It's just simply an outline of the things that we're going to focus on, and it's just a guide for conducting a technical study.
Okay, so, we would just adopt it once it's ready? Is that how that would work?
Yeah, presumably. I would hope that the planning commission would. And I think it would be very important that you're engaged with it along the way. But, you know, that's, we've got to get through this planning effort first and the zoning changes. But in the meantime, a lot of the technical work, behind-the-scenes technical work, will begin getting underway because we have to. We have a grant, and we have to perform under it.
Okay, it's just, yeah, we're kind of in the dark with what's going on in the plan. So, I'm interested to read it.
Yes, I am as well, Chris.
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you. The second item on the list is a reference to the town's referendum on prohibiting pool casino and sports betting licenses. As you know, the town voted on that referendum last year, and the town council approved ordinance O-21-1. And I know Vice Chairman Blackwelder has mentioned in some of the things that will follow this evening about full casino or casino-like atmosphere. So, I wondered if we should maybe take the referendum that was included or voted on by the public last year, and we can make that an appendix or looking for ideas of how it could be included. But it seems to me it's important enough to the town to have a referendum and the town council to vote on it to include some reference to that in the planning commission's framework here. Any thoughts?
Chairman, Chairman Brown, I have one question about it. If I understand correctly, the, we as a town can't prohibit that. Is that correct? That it's a state decision?
To the best of my knowledge, the state, yes, it's a state issue. This is basically the town saying, this is our position on it, but it could be essentially forced down our throat. As I understand, the sports betting issue, sports betting license issue, in the legislation passed by the state, somebody put in there that you can only have one license within 50 miles of each other or something like that. So, essentially, and I believe Rod and Rio has a license now for sports betting. And, but everyone else is prohibited under the statute because there's a distance requirement in there. So, there's only one sport betting license. That's my understanding. I haven't read the statute myself. But like you say, it's a state issue. They can either say yes or no. But the town folks here have said, made their position known. So, my thought is this, the comprehensive plan is basically a declaratory statement of where we're, where we want to go and that something in there that the citizens of the town are not looking for more gambling in the town.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
And I would, I would second the motion to make an effort to come up with a way to incorporate both code and, in reference within our plan, ways to implement what the town council made a resolution about and what the voters have voted about. And something that probably should go in that is the, my understanding is that the reason why Rod and Rio could apply for a license is because they were grandfathered. And so, I have questions about is the size of their facility grandfathered? Can people who have existing facilities get bigger? And I think that this means a concerted effort on our part to, A, list all the gaming activities that we're allowing in town in the land use table and make them a conditional approval in the areas that they're allowed, and then list those conditions. And we need to address expansion because we don't need them expanding and getting bigger. So, this is a whole effort, I think, that we owe the people who voted. They were given the opportunity to vote. We should do something, you know, we should do more than just provide lip service to their vote. We need to implement policy that reflects their vote. So, I'll second Larry's point.
Okay, any other commissioners wish to comment?
Chairman Brown?
Yes.
I would just like to concur with Laurie's statement. I think it's especially important to include it with the comprehensive plan, just as a point of reference, just as information, and to have people who read the report understand the context of, for example, the walkability study. And I think it will clarify why planning and zoning has made the decisions that they have. And I definitely think, if I remember correctly, the referendum was a majority against the sports study for and licensed addition. So, I really think it's important because I think it was a very, it was a very clear, unanimous, majority decision. So, I think it is great as context in with the master plan.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Larson, I see you're lighted up there. Are you, did you want to make a comment?
No, I agree wholeheartedly with this. And whatever we can, with whatever is within our purview to coordinate with that referendum, I'm all for. You know, whatever teeth we can put into it, which may be limited, but let's put them in.
Chris, you want to comment on, any thoughts on this?
There is a section that I added to discuss a number of land use types that would not fit into the general character of the town. And I think that's the perfect place for it. And I think that sort of declaratory statements, like have been mentioned here, are relevant. And at the end of the day, this plan should reflect the values of the town's residents. And so, I, I mean, I'm perfectly happy to say it's an appropriate addition to this document at this stage. So, I could draft, you know, a paragraph or whatever you'd like, or someone else could, and you can send it to me to let me know.
Yeah, if you're...
Chris?
I think, Blackwelder?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Another place that I would like to see it as, you have a section in the implementation chapter that which code items should be implemented. You know, in addition to the reference, I'd like to see it there as well.
Okay.
Okay. Let's see. The third thing on the list, we had a briefing from the town's economic development committee. They recommended three things. The expanding the potential commercial areas of Long Route 260 and 261. I only bring it up because they raised it. I just wanted to make sure that we are happy with the way we've gone and that we have chosen deliberatively to, for the limits that we placed on commercial areas, Long Route 260 and 261. So, I open it up for discussion if anyone has any comment on that.
Chairman Brown?
Go ahead.
But that is, so, I agree with you. I think we've been over these issues extensively. This isn't a motion to include their memo to us in the plan. It's just a topic.
Yes, this, I'm just, they raised it. I don't think we had, we've discussed this ad nauseam, I believe. But it just, I mean, two town councilmen presented the memo. I think we, it deserves to at least be confirmed that this is the direction, whatever direction we have, that's the direction we want to go. And we've thought about what they propose.
Larry, Chairman Brown?
Yes.
I would move that we not include it because it seems like it might be confusing, number one, because it's fairly different to what our plan is proposing. I appreciate the fact they came in and discussed it with us, but it wasn't something that we adopted as part of proposals for our thoughts on the comprehensive plan. So, I would recommend that we thank them for coming and presenting it to us, but not to put it into the comprehensive plan.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I don't hear any opposition to that approach. So, that's the end of that discussion. Also, they oppose the 35-foot height limit. Again, we have discussed this, and it's throughout our comprehensive plan. I only raise it because it was brought up by this economic development committee. And I want to make sure that there is no, that we've considered their thoughts, and there's no change, or there is a change, whatever we choose to do. So, any discussion on this topic?
Nope. No change.
Okay, hearing none. Also, the last one, in short, support for limited and regulated short-term rentals. Town council voted on a resolution at their last meeting that Vice Chairman Blackwelder attended. I don't know if you want to say anything about that, but I believe they adopted the resolution that was proposed by the town administrator, which was basically, if you haven't had a chance to look at it. The issue was that short-term rentals were not specifically addressed in any of the town ordinances in any of the zoning. Chapter 290, what was addressed was tourist homes. And many people interpreted tourist homes as being short-term rentals, but there was no specific link between the two. And the definition of tourist homes was, there was no definition of tourist homes in the code. So, what was proposed by the town administrator was to amend the definition or propose a definition for tourist homes that would link it to short-term rentals. Chris, do you want to say anymore about that? Because I think you were part of the drafting team of that.
Yeah, it effectively provides clarity in the zoning ordinance. And in many respects, these tourist homes and... Uh and um in many respects, these tourist homes and uh short-term rentals, when they operate in commercial zones, are one in the same. So this is simply allows the um that particular use um in the uh commercial maritime district um in the way that effectively now. So it it clarifies and answers the question that people have had about a need for more clarity in the zoning ordinance, definitional clarity, I guess you'd say. But what it doesn't say, it does not say anything about allowing a short-term rentals in residential areas. In fact, it's stays away from that issue entirely. It's only within those two maritime and commercial zones as they exist today.
And the 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 resolution is only talks about a definition of tourist homes that does not talk about rezoning anything. Um and I would also add that the resolution does not change the zoning ordinance. Uh I believe that will come back to us uh to make recommendations on uh on definitions and uh in in our zoning maps and zoning ordinance. So uh that's what the town council did at the last meeting. They did not change the ordinance, but they did what on a resolution to define tourist homes, which would include the idea of short-term rentals under the definition of tourist homes. So I think that issue, which was on my list, is essentially uh moot at this point. So um I would move on to the next thing on the list. And for this, I think I will turn it over to the vice chairman who wrote most of these um issues. And if you've read them and compared them to the uh the drafts that we've been given, uh I think it should be pretty straightforward. But uh we can go through each one of them, discuss them. Uh that gets just one point where we have to go to chapter five, which was distributed separately. And I hope you have that available to look at uh as we're going through it. So Commissioner Blackwelder, if you want to take over.
Thank you, Chairman. Um so when I read the municipal growth section, and I think uh some of you alluded to it in our last meeting when we had received it, you know, early on in the day prior to that meeting, um we we wanted to to put a more positive spin on our choices for municipal growth and our projection for the growth that we decided to pursue. And so this is just an attempt at doing that. Um it's a introduction that explains where we've been and why we're trying to head where we want to head, which is not to pursue um an exorbitant amount of growth. Um and I I really think this is the wise decision. Um we need to brace ourselves for a very big project that's coming to our town, and I think it's the right thing to do. I understand that there are a lot of national narratives floating around. And um we've implemented the 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 we followed the spirit of the smart growth principles better than most places. And I think Chairman Brown sent out a, I guess, a podcast or a planning meeting or, you know, whatever it is the uh Maryland Department of Planning runs on smart growth. And at the end of that, they explained that Maryland was one of only a handful of states that really implemented this well. And um and as far as within Maryland and within Calvert County, we've done it better than everybody else. And uh we have a right to to say, hey, we've done our part. We have some things coming, and our choices for municipal growth are what's best for our town right now. That's that's what we should be doing, um and not just kind of chasing down these national narratives and but and and by, you know, assuming that we're doing something wrong because we've already done a lot of the things that people ha- other people haven't. So anyways, this was my attempt at putting a positive spin on our choices for municipal growth and explaining why we have chosen uh more limited growth. And um so hopefully you guys have read it and I'm interested in your comments.
Lori?
Yes, Jan.
Uh I I concur with what what you said. I I think there's going to be enough throwing around of phrases, you know, including limited growth, stopping growth, stunting growth, et cetera. We're all going to have to be pretty strong on this uh when this baby comes out. So I agree with you. It needs a positive spin, or it doesn't need it. It 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 expresses how we felt, which is a positive feeling about what we're recommending. The one thing I have a question about on uh the second page uh of highlighted sentences, one, two, three, the fourth one down, this may not be the appropriate place, but at one point, we were going, I think Chris was going to give us some statistics about how deficient we are by national standards of parkland and open space, making a a stronger case for what we want.
Thank you, Jan. That was on my list to bring up in this meeting as well.
So Chris, uh did you have any uh follow-up to that or?
Um I believe I dr- addressed the park standards in the park section. Um so we can, which is in the community facilities ordinance. Um but I don't have any comments on the yellow text uh that's being discussed now.
Okay, did uh have you updated that uh area on national standards? Uh can you point to where that's been?
Yeah, yeah.
That question?
Sure, um just take me a moment to find it. Um. So it's in community facilities.
Yeah, we're all big.
Well, the it's it begins on, you know, I I know that everybody's draft is a little different as you open it up and add content, but essentially begins on page seventy-three where it's all been rewritten. Uh so there's, you know, paragraph after paragraph of um of text highlighted in yellow that recasts the the whole discussion um quite a bit and reorganized things and make a distinction between public and private. Um and reference that the deficiency with respect to neighborhood parks. Um I I, you know, the table there has the acreage uh of each of the parks I type. And um I I don't know, should I go through this in a little more detail? And I'd actually have to refresh my memory too because it's been quite a few weeks since I drafted this.
Yeah, so if uh the commission commissioners could look through this, uh it's on my page seventy-four that Sharon printed out for me. Um the only comment I I do have is the last sentence on that page, uh the closest community park outside of town is Dunkirk Town Center, I think. The closest community park is Ward Farm, which is being developed by Calvert County, and it's uh two-thirds of the way to Dunkirk from Chesapeake Beach. But it's a a huge park that the Calvert County is building. You may want to.
Yeah, I should cite that. Yeah, I agree with that.
That's my only comment on that.
You know, I wanted to mention to everybody that um the you see that I actually eliminated that table that had the National Park recreational standards in it. Um and I did that for a couple of reasons. I I I like the table. I like the standards. Um I think they're from a professional standpoint, I think they're very useful. But they are very general, and every community is different. I mean, we are very much endowed with natural resource types of open space, whereas many more communities have a lot of neighborhood parks and walkways to parks and playgrounds. That's where we're deficient. Um but the National Park Recreational Association doesn't publish those standards anymore. About ten years ago, they have decided, they decided not to publish them because uh they were, they were, they know that things are so unique, every jurisdiction is a little different. I still like to use them, and that's why I included them originally, because they helped frame a discussion about what, you know, ideally a park system looked like. And actually, it informed our discussion during that first meeting. Um and so in this review, I eliminated that particular table and just focused on what we have, what we know to be uh our strengths and uh and and candidly, our weaknesses or deficient areas. Um so I I think it, excuse me, I think it really um encapsulates the the current existing condition. Um at least my view it does.
Okay, so yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. Um I just think it would be helpful to have um, you know, the planning community's consensus standard in our plan because um we are maybe looking at acquiring property. We want to remind ourselves that as we grow with more people, we want to remember to put um parks in place so people have places to go. We just built two communities with zero parks. So I I think that um I think that having whatever the consensus is out there now, we put it in for housing, we put it in for for things that we're trying to, you know, we put it in there for other things. Um and if there are, if there is something out there that's generally accepted in the planning community, I think that maybe we should put it back in.
So Chris, did you say that the 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 table that was there was over ten years old and had been abandoned by the National Standards Group?
Yeah, in fact, they still have on their website, the language they used, I think it was ten years ago, more uh kind of the disavowing the use to that particular table. Uh and and this is an association of park recreational professionals, that's and they don't want us to use it anymore. Uh like I said, I still kind of use it with my clients as a way of just understanding where we are relative to what used to be an ideal. Um but I I don't think you can read this section without realizing that um the town has become deficient and that we have have in fact developed subdivisions without parks. Um and while, you know, among the four types of parks noted above, the town is deficient in neighborhood parks and mini parks, which are, you know, tottenades or playgrounds. And that most residents don't have walking access to a neighborhood park. And talk about the historic development of the town, didn't provide traditional parks and playgrounds. But I I don't, I don't know that, we can certainly add it back in there, but uh when it was in there, all you wanted was a kind of a formulaic kind of evaluation of how we rated against it. And we rate against it really poorly, and that's what I said the last time. Um so I I, you know, I'm just trying to streamline this and write it in a way that communicates to the public what the standards, uh how we match up with a a general park system. And more importantly, I think a park plan is necessary so that the town can establish what it thinks is relevant. Because, you know, Kellam's Field can be considered a community park in the same way that um uh Dunkirk Town Center's park can be considered a community park. But it also can can be considered a neighborhood park because it could provide neighborhood park amenities for those who can walk to it. And there's a playground in there too. So, you know, disaggregating all this and matching it up against a generic standard, it gets difficult. And uh that's why I sort of took my cue from the the Park Association and decided not to push too hard with those standards. But in instead, to sort of provide a kind of qualitative evaluation of it and and place this whole park stuff in a kind of the history of the town's development. But we need a park plan. I really do, and I think we need to establish standards. I think that's, I don't think we can establish standards as part of this comprehensive plan now, except to say that we, you know, I think our recommendation from a comprehensive plan standpoint is, let's do this. Let's, you know, establish standards. And in the meantime, let's look for opportunities to acquire property, uh to resolve our deficiencies.
Let's figure, let's figure out something to to visually show that we're deficient. Um it's okay if we're deficient. People are deficient in a lot of things. It's fine to put it in there. I it it helps the grant when you apply for it because they look at it and they say, oh yeah, you are deficient. So we're going to give you the, so I I I think it would be useful to have uh that hard information as a reminder that we need to think about this.
Well, Chris, uh seems to me you've written a page about that in words rather than a uh chart. Can I, can I ask the commissioners to to read that over closely? Think about what the vice chairman has recommended and and uh and send me a note or something. We'll add it to the list if if we have a next time um for those items. So the the parks discussion on page seventy-four is uh um what's what we're thinking about. All right, so moving on. We have the municipal growth on page eighteen, I think.
Are we going to put the agenda back up on the screen or should I go to uh agenda?
Okay, there we go.
Um, okay, this is mine too.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Are we, are we including that highlighted paragraph as asked about as being the first paragraph?
Okay.
I don't think we really.
Yeah, so let's uh let's, is there any opposition or support? Right, all in favor of including uh what is uh number one on the chairman's list there, including that language in the uh commission report? All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, here, anyone opposed? All right, so that paragraph will be inclu- or those paragraphs will be included. On to number two.
Okay, um this is just another edit. Hopefully you guys have read it. Um again, uh it was, the intent of it was to um, you know, further explain why we're making the choices we're making. And um, you know, I think the bottom sentence may be a little awkward. If anybody has a better idea for for saying that, I'm open to it. But um that was the idea, and I'm interested in your comments.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I did think that the last uh sentence needed to be reworked a little bit. Um I also want to make sure that we include in there that we are a historic. I know you have waterfront heritage, but I want to put down that we're a historic community because I want to, down the road in housing, include the fact that we need to protect some of our history in our historic value in some of the homes. But anyway, I want to include in here at some point the historic value of our town. So is there any way that we can say um this is a So is there any way that we can say um, this is a development as a um, I actually rewrote something, let me see here, as a safe, connected community that is also visitor-friendly, environmentally responsible, and historically, uh, no, I didn't finish it off, okay. But, but I was just, I was trying to come up with something that sounded a little less uh wordy than visitor-friendly and nature-friendly. I wanted it also to bring in the idea that we have um a safe community, or, you know, you know, that we have a safe community as well as visitor-friendly, environmentally-friendly or nature-friendly, however you want to call it, um, and protect the uh historical value of the, of the um, oh gee, okay, I can't keep talking because I, I haven't written it out as I should, so I can't keep talking, I'm so sorry.
You could say visitor and nature-friendly instead of saying visitor-friendly, nature-friendly, you could say visitor and um nature-friendly, Chesapeake Bay, a historic waterfront heritage community and recreation destination.
Okay, can you rewrite, can you write that out quickly, Lori? Put that in there?
Yeah, I think we are um taking visitor-friendly.
Visitor-friendly and.
Visitor-friendly and nature-friendly. Chesapeake Bay, a water, a historic waterfront heritage community and recreation destination.
Isn't keeping the word heritage in there somewhat redundant?
Yeah, you can either take out heritage or ta-, I, I, historic waterf-, I think historic waterfront community would probably be less cumbersome.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, good at it, guys, I like that much better. I was writing it really fast.
Speed writing.
So we have consensus to add the sentence as Mr. Brolton has suggested. Number three.
Um, again, I think that um, talking about consequences to our choices in our plan, it's, it's one thing to talk about them in our meetings and we should certainly consider, you know, we should always consider impact and consequence, we should always consider the entire picture of everything when we're planning. But to have written in our plan, uh, you know, here are the consequences of our plan, we shouldn't be making a plan with bad consequences. I um, I found, I went to the 2010 plan um to get this little bit of data and as you see, the, the difference over 10 years that we're proposing is 70, according to Chris's numbers, 70 households, which isn't really even that much. So I just crossed out the one sentence that talked about consequences and I just added the comparison um to show that we are holistically evaluating what we're doing.
Chris, uh, did you have any thoughts on that?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so uh, any other discussion?
I, I mean, I agree, I, I'm concerned about making it sound too uh contradictory to what we're proposing, it's like, why are we proposing it if there's all these challenges against it? On the other hand, if Chris feels that there is something that we have to put in there to alert uh the town council somehow that there's a, another side to something, I do want to hear about that. But it didn't seem to me as though uh the way we were modifying this was going to be adverse to our goals. So, I mean, Chris, am I wrong here or what, what, what am I thinking here?
I thought it was valuable to point out, like count, point counterpoint, because some folks who have a different perspective than uh the planning commission may say there are consequences uh to the town's policy, and there's always consequences. But what this is, is a sort of a, this is the consequence, reasonable consequence, but this is how the plan addresses the consequence. Oh, by the way, the town already addressed it by doing this, and that is the, the licensing. So, in other words, the town has prepared itself for this policy, and I, I thought it was complimentary and, but I'm not gonna argue because I really need to get this project done. And um, and candidly, I just, I, I'm gonna trust that you've had a chance to read it and if you disagree with it, let's move on, let's get the, let's get this complete. So, and I certainly don't want to be in a position arguing because uh the implicit in this language is values and, and, and points of emphasis, and that's for you guys to decide, not me. So um, you, you just let me know and we'll get it in the plan, Sharon and I, as soon as possible.
Well, I do like what Lori has included here and um I think that her modifications are valuable and that we should include them, so that's my feeling on it.
I only have one comment. Um, to me, it's um, it's a little confusing that that second sentence when it says this new development ca-, capacity is the sum of 174 currently approved housing units and 56 potential housing units, and then we talk about the town will grow by 230, is, is one of them the total? Um, it, it just seemed a little, I did, I don't want people to be confused by um our point.
Yes, one of them ought to, the, the, the sum is the total, um, and uh there are two ways of, of breaking it down. One, those units that are gonna happen anyway, they're in the pipeline, they've been approved, and then those that we estimate are likely to happen, just given the fact that uh we typically see some infill on vacant lots and subdivision of existing lots, uh, and that's what we call the, the infill potential.
Okay, so the 230 is the total, eh, the 174 and the 56, you've just broken it down by the currently approved and the 56 possible housing units which might be created through infill.
Right.
Okay, all right.
All right, so is there consensus on, on this change that uh number three in our, my list?
I'd like to see it.
And me too.
Hearing opposition, moving on to number four, where, uh, which essentially deletes the next two paragraphs. I had one question, uh, Chris, at the end of the first paragraph there, uh, "The Board of Zoning Appeal approved wetland buff-, buffer variances to accommodate two single-family houses that were approved to be built on pilings above anticipated floodwaters." Could you briefly uh describe that to us?
Elm Street. Yeah, there were two lots at the end of Elm Street, um, that you typically not see development on, um, but there are not many lots to build on, so these become viable, uh, even though they're more expensive to, to develop. But there, there's wetlands on them and then there's a 25-foot wetland buffer, uh, and the areas are impacted by uh sea level rise as well. So um, there were a number of issues and I had to deny the project, um, but the applicants obtained appeal uh variances uh to the wetland buffer so that they could build essentially right next to the wetland. Now, I knew that the wetland is going to expand, I mean, I, all our data is showing sea level rise happening and the wetlands expanding. So um fortunately, the Board of Appeals required that the houses be built on stilts uh so that when these parcels flood and those wetlands expand, at least the house will be elevated out of that um potential hazard. So that's just a little background on kind of what we, what we've been doing for these projects.
In instance, did you make a recommendation for the Board of Appeals to decline it? And they approved it anyways?
I can't recall exactly, Lori, I think it was more of, you know, yeah, I, I essentially did, but I had to provide a little guidance on, you know, if you approved it, this is the, these are the conditions that ought to be in place to, to do this. These are like legal lots of record, so it's not as if um a, a house couldn't, is prevented from being built. The question is, what house and what size? And after accommodating all of our requests by resizing the house to make it smaller, to elevate it, to reduce impervious surface area, to um take, take up land that's already paved, all these other things, uh, the end of the day, it's a legal lot of record and they made a lot of concessions to, to make it happen, but they're building on a lot that's a wetland. And, but you know, moving forward, a lot of those types of parcels may in fact become resource conservation, which uh would become more difficult to develop. But there's owned now for residential village, there's owned for single-family houses.
Yeah, I remember.
More difficult to develop, does that, if it's resource conservation more difficult? Or uh, they, they won't be able to appeal to the Board of Appeals?
There's always an, an appeal process uh, uh, on, on these things. But if the resource conservation that is ultimately adopted through zoning prohibits single-family houses, then they wouldn't be able to. Or if the, the regulation that ultimately is adopted requires a certain amount of land for any buildable lot within an RC area, um, then there probably could have only been one house built here rather than two. So, you know, it depends on what the standard, standards are, ultimately are, but I, I suspect i- if, if these areas do become rezoned, uh, it will become difficult, more difficult to build houses uh in them.
Okay, thank you, uh, somebody else had a question?
Oh, I just remember when those lots were for sale and they were, they were for sale for very cheap and I think um, I had recommended that the town purchased them for parking. But anyways, in the future, if something like that goes to the Board of Appeals, um, maybe a, a stronger recommendation not to approve variances would be helpful.
Well, it seems to me, well, it's uh, they'll, the Board of Appeals be governed by the zoning code and uh, that's what we'll be working on after we finish this comprehensive plan. So, something to look at, just uh where we feel very strongly about something, just to make sure the code is strong enough to uh enforce it. So, uh, on, now, the question is whether to eliminate these next two paragraphs. Go ahead, uh, Vice Chairman.
Um, I think, you know, in the previous two um edits, I'm basically discussed the same concept, um, I, I, this, this whole section just seemed to, you know, send me off in a direction that I didn't feel like um this plan needed to send anybody to. And I did, you know, look up a few other municipal growth plans just to see if there was some kind of regular insertion of consequences. And I didn't find anything like that, I'm not saying that no plan, you know, that exists has it, but I, it didn't seem to me to be a standard thing that you add.
I'm just wondering, Lori, if we might want to leave it in there and put a sentence before it all and say, this, the, this is, these are examples of what we have to be concerned of and we have to protect the community from. Maybe what we need to do is leave that in there and remind ourselves, we need to come back and make stronger protections uh in future codes. Maybe that's a, maybe that's why Chris is, I mean, I hate to be talking about Chris in a third person, but maybe that's why we need to keep that in there, is just to remind us, you know, we can't forget to um, uh, review those codes again and, and make them you know, pretty much concrete. But that would be the reason why I would keep that in there, is just, again, put some kind of a, uh, an introduction to that saying, uh, this is, these are examples or reasons that we need to review our codes and, and um, in order to uh promote our objectives and goals of protecting the environment. I mean, maybe we should do something like that.
Commissioner Rudd, you, you had uh comments, it looks like.
Jan, you're muted.
Very rare indeed. I don't think it belongs in there, it's like, it's like a lightning rod to people who, who, who might choose to uh, what I'm trying to say is, it, it, it's a negative. And it's sort of like the Economic Development Committee, they express their opinion, okay, but we don't have everybody's opinion in the town, so to speak, locked into the plan, and this to me just, it just seems unnecessary and complicating. And everything we do has a consequence, but this is like a, you know, do, 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 kind of thing.
That was my impression.
I don't know if I go that far, but, it's not Twilight Zone, but, okay.
Hey, any other commissioner comments? Uh, so let's uh, let's do a vote here. Who wants to uh remove these two paragraphs? If you would please raise your hand or say aye or identify yourself. Mr. Rudd? Mr. Green Gold say to remove, can't see Commissioner Brolton, Commissioner Larson says to remove, that's four.
Jan Ruttcase, Commissioner Ruttcase says, get out of here.
Chairman, uh, this is Kathleen, I say remove it.
Okay, so it's unanimous, uh, let's move on to the next item, number five on page 22.
Uh, okay, this is um, you know, it's a nuanced judgment, um, and uh, in this municipal growth section, uh, Chris talks about um different forecasts, different conditions of our community facilities, uh, one of them is schools and I ha-, I do have now, well, I have one recently graduated high schooler and now two current high schoolers that will be going to Northern High School, um, and then one coming right behind them. So the schools are, are an important thing, but all the community facilities are important things, um, and so I just added the word certain, um, because obviously not all the community facilities are uh sufficient or deficient and um, and I, I added the word maybe sufficient. Right now, the newly built high school is over capacity. And I don't really understand, except for maybe to allow people to build more, why Calvert County is projecting a decrease in uh school enrollment because we're building two town centers. So we don't, I don't think we even know what the condition is going to be, but in a, because we're not recommending a lot of growth, I don't, I think it's counterproductive to say we have all this room in our schools. I don't think that that's necessarily going to be true. Hopefully it will be true because, you know, you know, be, right now Beach has trailers because we misestimated growth, so a lot of school duh, a lot of schools do, um, particularly with the older kids and the high schools, um, fields and um, their facilities are even more important, it determines uh who can take the AP classes, who can take, you know, it, it, it has an impact, we need to be responsible about our, our schools and their capacity.
Okay, is there any, any discussion on this change? Does anyone oppose this change? Hearing no opposition, let's move on to number six. Number six is on page 23.
So this is, I think I just discussed this. This is kind of the the end of that nuanced edit. This is like the clarification of and all it's saying is, you know, and I don't know what the county projected, but Chris was telling us that they projected decrease in growth. It's just an addition saying they're planning to. And they're they are growth areas. So you know, it's just a clarification of what's going on and I don't know how solid those projections of decreased enrollment are.
Okay, any discussion? Any thoughts, positive, negative?
I like it.
All right, hearing hearing no opposition, I would say make that change and let's move on to number seven. It's also on page 23.
So this is something that I thought we had talked about and supported getting all of the, you know, kind of retrofitting the sewers and the septic systems that are contributing to pollution in the bay. But this this does represent a policy. If we put it in here, it represents a policy and there's there's some wording and implementation factor that would need to be adjusted as well. But I was under the impression that we had talked about this before and that we wanted to do it.
This is this is something that I I really would like to see added. They and I'm I want to work with one of the town councilmen who worked to revise this, the sewage manual and also I want to talk with Commissioner Anna Rundle County Commissioner Jessica Hare, who is an expert in water and sewage systems. And she I've talked with her once before about ways for getting a financial assistance for families that are want to convert from septic systems to towns sewer system. So this it's generic enough in my sense, as funds are available, it doesn't say where they're coming from. But I that's if I have time, that's something I want to work on. Anybody else?
I thought Chris had that in, don't you have that under some other section? I thought I read that somewhere else.
Yes, it's it's in the community facilities.
Yeah.
Beginning on about page 69.
Page 71, I think, yeah.
Detail the number of housing units that would be added, like the ones that are not provided yet with water and sewer that that could be added to the system. Then again, on page 71, with respect to public water or
But adding it here doesn't detract from that.
No.
So is there anyone that opposes this change?
Nope.
Hearing none, let's move on to number eight.
Oh, number eight is, I think, this is the commercial land use one that I started out revising.
Yeah, that's your proposal, I think. Did you rewrite it?
Okay, so I hope you all got the email where I sent a, you know, Lori, since she was on a I let Lori rewrite it again. So there was a cleaner copy of this. Hopefully, you got that in an email yesterday, Lee, along with a list of a lot of the businesses, all the businesses that I found in the town. So just trying to confirm that we have at least 80 commercial ventures in town, which I was impressed. I hadn't really looked at that and noticed how how many we actually did have. And they seem to all survive COVID because I checked on them and made sure that they were all still viable and they are. But, you know, if you notice that paragraph, let me see here, if you've got the last paragraph that I sent you, then Lori then consolidated that paragraph and then included the rest of what Chris had already written with those eight bullet points or so, pretty much right below that paragraph. So it's, should I read it in case you don't have it? It says, "The town of Chesapeake Beach boasts an array of commercial entities commensurate with the size of its population. As of 2021, the town's website references over 80 commercial ventures within five miles of the town hall that residents can access. Local businesses and services include grocery, gas, hardware, lodging, indoor dining, takeout food, specialty food, marinas, tackle, charter fishing, antiques, art, hair, salons, cleaners, car wash, pet services, professional consultants, spa services, live entertainment, casino gaming, and large venue services for conferences and weddings, as well as many others." And then, of course, all of what Chris wrote on Appendix B, I should say, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine bullet points are pretty much all the same. So and then we have institutional land use and then the other nearby resident amenities, including bayfront park, beach elementary. So it's basically listing everything that we have as far as commercial and institutional venues. So anyway, that was my little contribution that I thought maybe we need to include a positive look at the introduction to the commercial land use. I don't know if anybody's, I think Kathleen, you had an idea or suggestion?
Um, there's only two comments. Thank you for rewriting that. In that, when you refer after it says Veterans Memorial Park and then a passive, what what is the connotation of passive waterfront site?
A passive park is a designation that indicates that the park doesn't have any active, real active uses like a tot lot playground or, you know, other uses that are more actively, you know, like for exercising, that kind of thing. Passive is where you go and reflect, you go and sit down and think, you know, that's what a passive park is.
Okay, is that is that generally known? Because I I didn't know it and I'm just thinking about people who read that.
We can take it out. It's something I I used to put together a lot of parks back in the day. And so that's what we use the term passive back then. I don't know, Chris, are they not using the word passive anymore?
They use aggressive now, no kidding.
Yeah, yeah.
Passive aggressive.
We still use the term, but it always troubles me a little bit too, because I don't think the average person makes a distinction unless you're talking about active and passive, you know? If you're
We can take the word passive out, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
And my only other comment is the the second to the last sentence, it says fishing creek that allows dog walkers and exercisers a pleasurable distraction. Maybe we want to just take that out and say a nature trail. The pleasurable distraction, I think, sounds awkward to me.
Pleasurable experience?
I don't think that's right, actually, that went over email. I'm trying to figure out how to get, I don't know, my screen's frozen or something. I was going to try to pull it up for you guys in screen share, but it's not even cooperating at all. But Cindy, that I don't think that part was in, I didn't include that part in the rewrite that sentence.
Well, I can take it out if it if we seem to find it somewhere. I don't have it in my rewrite. I think it's, I think it's.
Let me look.
I think it was.
I think the general idea is is to take recognize the the businesses, the many businesses
Right, right.
in the community. And I think that's important. I think it's also something we need to be cognizant of as we're doing zoning because most of these are operated out of people's homes.
A lot of them are, yeah. They're not, yeah, in fact, we did make a point of saying in what didn't we put in there something about storefront venues somewhere, Lori? I don't remember.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Three front.
Office uses, let's see.
Well, I think basically it's the details really don't matter. The point being that we have a lot, but we need to, you know, consider it when we're making more more of a focus on these commercial entities. We've got to really work on on making it more cohesive and and where we should be placing some of these. There's a lot that we can use this as a as a resource.
As Commissioner Greenold says, I think that the detailed language isn't as important as the concept that is being proposed. Having said that, you mentioned the Veterans of Foreign Wars chapter. Where is that?
Well, you know, that's the that's the VFW up the street where they have dinners and you don't have to be a member.
You mean the American Legion?
The American Legion, yeah.
Yeah, because us legionnaires may have may have trouble with that.
Okay, so.
American Legion posts.
Chairman Brown.
But could I just suggest that Cindy, after after we hear from Commissioner Rutke and anyone else that wants to speak, maybe Commissioner Greenold polish it up this paragraph and forward to Chris for inclusion. Commissioner Rutke, go ahead.
I have a couple of observations. I love the positivity that you put into it. And but I have a, it's kind of a financing question, a funding question for Chris that I have. We were told in based on our walkability study, what we wanted to have done, et cetera, that we needed the town to commit to doing the things that we wanted to have done in order to get funding. And when I look at 260, coming into town, they are aging properties and frequently vacant and underused. And I that's that, to me, is a statement of fact. I mean, anybody who drives into town knows that. So my thought is, you know, there's loads of Main Street money that we could get. I understand that the governor put a whole bunch more out there. Do we have to say, Chris, that there are things we want to do with some of our commercial? That's a long way of saying it. I apologize, but.
Yeah, good observation. I don't think that point is irreconcilable with Cindy's. I think the two work well together. And and we do say that at a number of points. I mean, after all, we do say we need to focus public and private investment on revigorating that center, you know, we call it a gateway center and
Right, right.
I don't, I can't recall if we do enough to describe the existing conditions, which have not been ideal for the town at all. And those these properties have, particularly on the on the right side of the road as you head west, have struggled quite a bit for a long time. But I I think at various points, we're talking about it and the complications with developing those lots and why we want to allow some level of mixed use in that area. I don't know.
Do we need to say that? I guess my question to you is, should we be saying that in where we are, where Cindy's putting her information? Do you know what I'm saying?
Oh, kind of, well, things are, we have like a vibrant local entrepreneurial culture from a land use standpoint, still have some obsolescence that needs the address and we are focused on public and private, you know, investment to help bring that about. Yeah, yeah, sure, we can weave that through that discussion. I don't, Cindy, I don't think that takes away from kind of the positive feel that you vibe that you've laid out here, which I really like.
Well, do we want to put that as an objective, what Jan was talking about? Or do we want to?
Don't we have that? I thought we have something like that in the land use objectives, that economic development or
Specifically that area?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to find my draft. Just be a moment here.
Okay, I'm sorry. That's all I I wanted to say is that we we need to acknowledge what is in order to get change.
Right, right. Fair point.
And Chris, you
Go ahead, Commissioner Blackwell.
Thank you, Chairman. Did you receive Cindy's rewrite? Because it did retain most of your bullets. I don't even think it, I don't think we eliminated any.
No, we didn't take any of Chris's bullets out. So you guys did not get my email? I sent my email yesterday and you should have all received it.
I got it.
Cindy, your rewrite is much, I have your, I pulled up your
Okay, yeah, it's an email I
Much clearer and that's right, that's language.
Well, you can thank Lori for the rewrite. Lori rewrote it for me, so there you have it. She's
That language doesn't appear in there with the passive.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
My apologies.
No, no, I'm sorry that, yeah, I should have emailed you again to remind you to look at that email. Chris, do you have that email?
I think it does a good job. Maybe maybe that's maybe that addresses Jan's concern. Maybe it could be beefed up a little bit.
So if I could suggest that Commissioner Greenold work with Chris to the latest language and incorporate the other ideas from Commissioner Boral, Commissioner Rutke into that section. Any objection?
Okay, so essentially, Jan, your idea is to include include, what what is your idea, Jan? Say it over again for me.
Sorry.
Say it over again, yeah.
Right. My idea is that it sort of depends on who your your audience is in terms of how you write it. But I saw Chris's Chris's paragraph about what needs, what still could be done to make us even better, a sort of an aspirational, you know, let's go, let's get some funds, let's do some things. And and yours is, it's wonderful and it it says to the people in town and all their businesses that that's wonderful, but we can't forget to say we still have more work to do. I think that's what I'm trying to say.
Right, we need more action plans to go along with it. That wasn't the intention of this, actually. The intention was just to make an observation of what we have. But yes, we definitely need to make some action plan out of that as to what what we want to do further. But again, most of the rest of what Chris said or Chris originally said is still still in the one that the final draft that I have there, so.
Yeah, I think we left it all. I do think Chris's, whatever he was, like, Chris, what you just summarized, like, kind of off the cuff?
Yeah.
Be a nice bullet to, you know, in the observation section or wherever those bullets are.
I agree. Yeah, I think this is a really good discussion and I'll weave something in there just to as a sort of acknowledgement, but but not to take away from the kind of the snapshot that we have here.
Right, I agree.
Okay.
Okay, we'll tidy that up. Chris, I'll email you tomorrow and we'll see what we can do to make any modifications on that.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, moving on to paragraph 8A. Okay, moving on to paragraph eight A. Uh, that's because I inserted, uh, Commissioner Greengold's paragraph in, after I wrote this. Um, so we're, uh, I think it's essentially just adding a phrase. Uh, Commissioner Blackwelder and the parcel known as Randall Cliff's Heritage Area. Isn't that, uh, what you're suggesting?
Yeah, that's all I did, just, uh, you know, put it in there in case we're looking for some funding. It's, it's there if we need it and, um, you know, it's there to act on if we need it.
Uh, change "no" to "known" and the parcel "known as", not "know as".
Yes, thank you, Cindy.
Yeah.
And I, there's a typo and something else I wrote too, so we can fix all that at the end too.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sure all of you are, hopefully, uh, not many of you found editorial or, or other changes, but if you'll send those changes directly to Chris so he can act on them, we don't need to spend commission time on editorial issues. Okay?
Okey dokey.
All right, moving on to number nine on page 11. Now, I, I'm not sure what to do with this, Commissioner Blackwelder, because, uh, so go ahead.
Okay, so this is my most unfavorite thing to discuss because it always goes crazy, but, um, so let me just practice these, um, these land use zones and the reason why I'm saying, um, we should retain them and the reason is, um, the reason for all these next little handful of things is just to make writing the code easier.
Now, are we, wait, wait, are we on the same number? This is page 11. The section recommended elements of the town's center vision include, verify that these align with.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I skipped ahead. So, um, okay, so, so for this one, I, I, it's really just kind of a placeholder because I know that, um, that, you know, that committee met and I, it was part of the town council report what's, you know, what some of the recommendations from the community were in, um, from that meeting. Uh, you guys should read it. It's got a lot of, a lot of great ideas. Um, but anyways, it's, that's just there to remind us to consult with Councilman Morris and I think Jan, aren't you on that committee as well?
Yeah, but I had some issues. I couldn't meet with them for several of their meetings. I, I've been included in their emails and, and everything else, but.
So may I suggest that we put this, as you said, a placeholder, uh, not hold up, uh, our final approval of this send on for review by the state and the county because we can always add this before the town council finally adopts it. And so that gives us in the, uh, this committee, time to work their magic and, uh, and, and we'll just set it aside as a placeholder and make sure we go back and review this before we send it finally, the final submission to the town council for approval.
Yes, that was, yep, that was my intent.
So moving on to number 10, page 13, suburban cluster.
Um, I don't want to go too round in circles about this. I think that this, my concern with, I have lots of concerns with all these new zones, but it would take forever to, to talk about them. Um, I have less of a concern with this one about the residential plan community if Chris does in fact, um, identify on our land use map in the way that, um, the land preservation areas are preserved. Um, if he identifies where the forest conservation easements are and they exist. If we can't do that, I would prefer that we retain the idea of a suburban cluster because those neighborhoods did come in as easement. Uh, and I think that those areas are be, will be better protected, but I, I want our forest conservation easement protected. They are easement and they are not developable and we need to identify that in our plan or else they're not actually protected.
So Chris, you want to, uh, give us your thoughts?
Uh, yeah, um, so I'm halfway through locating the various easements. Um, they're in the plaits for these projects and I think I've got them all actually, but I didn't want to go out on a limb with respect to Richfield Station. I want to make sure I have them right, but most of the green space around, uh, Richfield Station is locked up, protected by easement. Um, but I, I want to make a distinction between the land use plan and the zoning map, which would come later. Uh, Lori, you just mentioned that, you know, about creating all these new zones. These are not zones and we're not creating any zones. Uh, this is just a, kind of a, uh, a recommendation of a type of development. So, for instance, saying something is resource preserve says a lot more than saying it's low density. And of course, low density is the zoning category now. Um, because when it comes time to comprehensively review the zoning ordinance, the planning commission might say these areas, because of the resource value and their pattern of building bigger lots, ought to have larger lot sizes than currently are allowed in the low-density district. You know, could, uh, or, or put it another way, when you do extend water and sewer service to these areas like, um, Wesley Stinett and Tartan and, or Old Bay, Old Bayside Road, when we do extend those services to those areas, all of a sudden, those lots can be subdivided into multiple lots each. And these areas develop at a really dense way because the low-density zoning district is not really low-density as we know it. It's just low-density relative to the medium-density. Um, what this resource preserve says, it's, it's the policy of the town to protect this and keep it as a really kind of rural, large lot, forested subdivision. Uh, and that's why we have a distinction between the plan, which is qualitative and value latent, and then the zoning map, which is much more, you know, legal. Um, so I, I've, I've tried to make that distinction a number of times in the course of the past couple of years. I, I, I hope at least a majority of commissioners get that because I think it's really important and it gives you the flexibility you'll need when it comes time to write the zoning ordinance. Um, and, and it doesn't confuse people, get people mixed up thinking, oh, we've got two zoning, uh, maps.
So this is, um, I didn't have a, really a problem with the resource reserve. I don't even think I added it here, but it is kind of the same concept of, um, um, I, I guess my question is, if we adopt this plan, but we do not adopt code, I mean, is the intent to adopt the code for these areas, and that's, I have a motion actually to do that, when we're doing the plan, um, are, to do that concurrently because then we'll know how it all works together. But if we change all the zoning district names in our plan and then we have done nothing to our code yet, what happens legally? And, and what, what gets lost?
Nothing happens legally. Uh, if the plan gets adopted and has this land use plan map, it says, it signals what the town's expectations are and plan is for how these areas ought to be in the future. And really, this, really, in most cases, it's, it's how they ought to be retained for the future because most things are developed already, right? So, uh, if, if it takes a while before a zoning map is adopted, um, the, the current zoning map, the one that's in effect at, at any given time is, is the one that rules the day. So, yeah, you want to move rather expeditiously to adopt a new zoning map and not let it linger too long. Uh, the zoning map and the plan map ought to be consistent, or at least they, it ought to be clear that the zoning implements the land use plan. Um, so.
So, I, I get what you're saying. I just, I, I don't understand why you say, and my main concern will be addressed when we have the overlays that identify the easements that can't be built on. But I, I, um, I guess my question is, why did we bother changing our RPCs to suburban clusters? It just seems like that just creates more work.
Okay, good point. So the RPC is drawn very extensively. It encompasses all the green space around Richfield Station and, and, and the heritage, not the heritage, I'm sorry, but Richfield Station, let's say that. And if, if we just showed that all is RPC, we would lose the distinction between what's developed and what's preserved. And our policy is that what's preserved, this open space ought to remain preserved forever. And in fact, we are proposing a new category when we adopt our zoning map and that new category would be resource conservation. Uh, so if we showed, you know, if this, if we use the resource or the, um, the res- residential plan, community district as a land use plan idea, we would, we, we've, we've just cloud the differences between a single family, the multifamily that's there and the forest preservation and the open space and the wetlands and all that. Um, what I'm, what I'm getting is that when this plan is, uh, eventually adopted, um, the new zoning map would zone, rezone land that's RPC to resource conservation. It would clearly and deliberately move land out of a development zone and into a resource preservation zone. And in doing that, it would make the forest conservation easements and the zoning consistent. And that's what I hear people saying. They want to make sure that the forest will last forever in this area. And, and that's what, um, you know, this plan sets up.
Okay, yeah, that's great. As long as that happens and easements are, so we don't stop paying a developer for them, um, that makes me.
And, and it just as another example, if you look at Chesapeake Village, that green space around Chesapeake Village, some of which is not in forest conservation, as you saw on the map I sent out today. That's all zoned for, um, low density, meaning it could be developed, right? Um, but on the, if you look at the land use plan, you see the only thing that could be developed is that which is developed already and that's those lots. Everything else would be open space and a new zoning map would classify those properties as resource conservation.
Right, so as long as, because they really can't build on that because they came in on our community as a, a residue area. So technically, they shouldn't be allowed to. And I just want to make sure that that information, that they're not allowed to build on, and that's all I'm trying to do. We don't have to keep going around because you really, Chris, are the only person that knows how to do this. I don't, you know, I didn't get a degree in this. But that's what I want to make sure happens.
Yeah, I understand that entirely. And I, and I, what I want to stress is that this approach gets us there a lot better than, um, simply showing the zoning categories on these areas. Because if we do that, we're just basically signaling no change. We're going to zone it the way it is now and we're going to keep the zoning the same. Uh, we're going to keep the zoning the same for the subdivision itself, but, uh, for those open space areas, the ones that are protected by easement and the ones that are not, they would be, uh, now resource conservation.
Okay, and we will record those and identify them on a map that we adopt as easement, correct?
Um, yeah, so, yeah, but when we place it in the, in the comprehensive plan, we're just describing the existing conditions. We're not creating a layer of legal protection. They're protected now by easements, right? I mean, they are what they are. They're, they're no-go zones. Um, and, um, the map will only show and reveal some that are protected and some that's not. And actually, it'd be useful to people to see that. Well, some of these areas you thought were residue and could always be open, maybe even thought it was preserved forest. It's not preserved and it's still owned by private entities. Uh, and who knows? I don't know. Maybe there's some development value that resides in those residue parcels that could be developed if the zoning in the future were to allow for it. And by changing the plan to say that no, that is resource conservation and the recommendation is that once we adopt the plan, we're going to adopt a zoning map, we're going to zone that resource conservation, it takes it off the table. It, it takes the develop, removes the risk of development of those residual parcels.
Okay, so maybe in chapter five, we can just add a section that identifies all the easements that already exist. Um, just because I know that's going to get lost in the sauce. So I would like to see, you know, a map, you know, in your existing condition in the land use section. That would be a good place for it, that we show the existing condition is that they are easements and they're not developable. So that would be something that would ease my mind.
The, um, the first draft of that is what I sent over today. It's, it's still incomplete, but we're getting there and, um, and if, if there's no objection on part of commission, I'll, I'll create a separate map from that and we'll put it in chapter five and I think that'll answer the question once and for all.
And then this, this would be, uh, just the major easements, right? Because there are dozens of easements of various types. You're, we're just talking about, uh, major, um.
Um, yeah, you're right. There's, there's a lot of them and part of the trouble is to sort of disentangling them. But the two that I'm focused on is the forest conservation easements or the forest retention area. Uh, and with respect to Richfield Station, the forest interior dwelling birds habitat protective area, which was a negotiated, um, mitigation measure between the Critical Area Commission, the town and the developer. So, uh, that's a separate easement regime, but it's protected, just like a forest conservation, uh, area would be protected. So just those two, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's what Commissioner Blackwelder's concerned about. The major areas we want to protect that have easements and not every sewage easement or, uh, other, uh, you know, land use easements that are.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, community open space, residue areas, forest conservation easement and any, the, the bird easement that you mentioned and any other major easement.
Okay, so every time you, you expand that request, Lori, you add a lot more time. This is, it's not easy to go through every single one of these plaits, which are in the hundreds to verify that. Um, I, I'd like to, I could go through the, identify HOA open spaces, but, um, they are what they are. They're, I mean, they're not, yeah, I, I, if I could just give you the map on the, the protective easements for the time being and maybe that could be a work item for a later date. Right, those areas are protected, they're open space. They would require a plat change to, to free it up from open space. What you'll see is the, what's not, what's developed and, well, what's not developed or what's not protected by easement is HOA open space. It's kind of the balance.
Okay, well, let's just see what you have. I know where those open spaces are and, I mean, there's only, there's four major communities in our town and those, that's where I'm concerned. Those four major communities have land that came in with the community and all that land that came in with the community is protected from development.
Okay, um, now, I think the, the discussion we've had covers, uh, number 10, 11, 12. Uh, Commissioner Blackwelder, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're up to your question. your question and number 13. Are we planning to allow all of the low impact commercial options in the RV areas as we do now? Chris?
Well, we didn't really settle on that, um, question. I kind of anticipated, uh, you would, but I, I never brought it up and we never resolved it. There are a variety of kind of small, very small scale, kind of home occupation type of businesses that are permitted in the RV district. That's why it's called RV, it was meant to be, uh, in there, has some mixed uses. I kind of got a feeling that the commission wanted to retain that aspect of the RV, but, but we haven't formulated any specific suggestion to change that.
So the current, uh, current language allows, uh, businesses like, uh, Commissioner Greengold had mentioned earlier, the 80 businesses out there, I imagine a fraction of them is something like 30 or 40 that are in the residential district. And, and so the current zoning allows that.
You, like that, but I wouldn't say that's, that Cindy's, uh, description is a, is the direct parallel. I don't think they're just one in the same. There, there are a lot of home occupations, but within the residential village, you have the ability to do a little bit more. And if you, if you, like, I can share the screen and just quickly answer this question by going to the zoning tables, the permitted use tables. And I'll see if I can do that now.
Yeah, because the question will go to the commission. We go, do we intend to allow low impact commercial options in the RV areas? So ask you to think about that as, uh, Chris presents this.
Sharon or Holly, do, um, can you help me? Uh, I think I might need permission to share the screen, if you're, if you're available.
You should be able to share it. Can you try again?
Uh, remind me how it is that I do that.
Just at the bottom, there's a little green tab with an arrow pointing up.
Oh, I got it now. Thank you, thank you, Holly.
Sure.
Okay, um, so here's the table of permitted uses in chapter 290 of the town's code. Uh, here's residential village in this column. And we go down to, well, we could have churches and places of worship as a conditional use. Schools, home daycare, uh, daycare center, nursery school, kindergarten. And the agency is giving care to persons as a commercial operation. So, yeah, I'd like, for instance, uh, for instance, an adult daycare center or, or child daycare center. A professional school or studio for music, dance. This is a special exception with conditions. That's what the SC means. That means it's, it's not approved outright. It has to go to the Board of Appeals for a public hearing. You could have a library, uh, community center, um, public buildings, um, an orphanage or nursing home or other establishment for the care of persons. You could have a group home, which is a special exception, again, that would have to go to the Board of Appeals. Now here, you could have an office if you're an attorney, uh, or an architect, a doctor. And there are certain conditions, and I, we can review some of those conditions if you want, but they're basically, you know, you, the lawyer has to live there. He can't sort of show up each day and, and for work at that house. It has to be his residences or her residences, and, uh, the business, uh, is sort of accessory to that. An office or clinic for medical or dental examination. So you could have, as a permitted use in the RV, RV district, a doctor's office. More professional types of businesses, uh, artists, gallery, an art gallery or a studio, and some retail establishments under certain circumstances. Again, there's a whole set of conditions. While it's sort of, it's expressively allowing it, the conditions are rather restrictive. So it's a kind of a give and take. General retail, no, you can't do that. A personal services, like a travel agency or real estate broker, yeah, you could do that under certain conditions.
Just take, uh, for an example, the repair shop there, uh, shoe shop. What, what kind of conditions you think would be imposed on a shoe repair shop? Down at the very bottom, number 16 or something.
Yes, let's, let's go find that. Conditions and standards for conditional uses. And here are all those uses, churches, uh, public, hey, home daycare. So let's keep on going down to professional office, artist studio, gift shops. Here we are, personal service shops, salons, shoe repair, et cetera. Okay, in the RV district, this use shall be limited to properties with frontage on Maryland 261. The principal building shall be no closer than 30 feet to any lot line that adjoins a property in residential use. To reduce the impact of traffic and parking, the total floor area devoted to the use shall be limited to 3,000 square feet. Which, by the way, is, is not tiny. I mean, 3,000 square feet is a, a nice size. I mean, that's a McDonald's, right? A modest sized McDonald's. On, off-street parking shall be provided in the rear or side yard and shall be screened from view. Buffers and screening conditions. Any new building shall be designed to be architecturally harmonious with buildings in the neighborhoods. In other words, it's got to look like a house. You can't build a commercial building in the RV district and just be done with it. It's got to fit in to the residential fabric. So if you met those types of conditions, you could do a, um, a shoe repair.
Now, are any of those, uh, that can be waived by the Board of Appeals?
No, these conditions are not, um, subject to variances, uh, by the Board of Appeals. And the Board of Appeals can't waive a condition. They can only grant variances to dimensional standards.
So say, uh, a retiree that's living not on, uh, that doesn't front on the mount on Maryland 261, uh, and you have some experience repairing shoes, you can't open a shoe repair shop in your home.
That's right, unless you move to a property on 261. That's how restrictive it is. Yeah, so, and, um, no, that's right, Larry.
Yeah, because I've, I've dealt with some of these businesses, uh, and I'm not going to identify which ones are not on, about 261, but it seems to me, I mean, they're, they're in the back, you know, back amongst the community and they're, uh, they deal with one customer at a time, um, doing services, uh, and, and, and they're retirees, uh, you know, just making a little money on the side.
Yeah, well, Larry, we, we do, uh, home occupation permits for, and what you've described seems to be the typical home occupation. So someone could do that. Now, I know, I, well, I suspect there are a lot of people that do this without getting the home occupation permit, but it's ea, it's really easy to get the home occupation permit. I mean, there's standards for that, too, and they're relatively easy to get. But for that, the home occupation is truly accessory to the residential use. Uh, it's a small part of the house, you have to live there, your family has to be there. You can't just, like, as I said earlier, like, for these, you could have a, a shoe repair salon and not live in the dwelling unit. So, you know, on 26th Street, um, near the town's center, town center or town hall, someone could open a salon and provided it was built to look like the house that surrounds it, and it was only no more than 3,000 square feet, uh, well, you know, maybe this standard kind of prevents that, except that if it's, you know, it could front on 261, right around 26th Street. You didn't have to, you don't have to live in the house if you're operating a shoe repair, but you could live in the house and operate a shoe repair under a home occupation permit, which means you're much more limited in, in the commercial part.
All of these, all of these standards in, in the zoning code are subject to review after we complete the, uh, comprehensive plan, right?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, yes.
All right, any other discussion on that? Does that answer your question, Commissioner Blackwelder?
So, yeah, to answer my question, I kind of already need to answer that, but the, the subject that I wanted to bring up is, um, I hate to do this, but, um, do we want to add, do we want to add a district called RV3 as a district where we may want to be a little bit more liberal with what we allow in the town center area? And the reason I say this, and, and, you know, even if we start off making it the exact same permission as RV2, I think it'll be easier to write and adjust the code if we identify any areas that we think might, um, might develop in a more commercial way than we would want in some of the more neighborhood areas. And, um, Chris, could you put the, or could somebody put their agenda back up? I have the very same question about commercial zoning properties, because in our commercial zoning properties, we have some that were saying, oh, we want to let residential on top of it. But they're zoned the exact same thing as places that I know we don't want to allow that. So I'm, I think it would be easier from a code writing perspective to, to delineate on the map that we're proposing that we adopt, areas that we think will develop differently than other areas. I don't think we want the Rollins Plaza, and I know you addressed this in writing, Chris, but when it comes time to write the code, like, I don't want to write code that says, one of the conditions is that it's not in, in Chesapeake Station Plaza, or that it is in Chesapeake. I, I just want those to be different zones and we just make it easy on ourselves. If they're going to develop differently, they're, and it can be commercial, town commercial A and town commercial B, or resident, whatever it is, I think that if we want something to develop differently than other areas, it needs to have its own name.
Okay, Chris, is this, is, do we need to have that level of detail in the comprehensive plan, or can that be decided, uh, when we're working on the zoning code?
Well, yes, it, it certainly could be decided when we're working on the zoning code. The fact that we say in the plan that it's recommend, that we recommend that there be no housing above commercial on the, um, Rollins', you know, shopping center area, that's sufficient guidance to allow you to, at the time, draw a new zoning district or, or deal with that in any text amendment way you want. I don't think it's necessary. I see Lori's point, but, um, you know, we could add it, you could, or you cannot, it's not necessary. But it certainly does clarify what it is that you, you seek to achieve. But it's also, by the same point, narrows, um, uh, options for you.
So the reason, it's a different standard for adopting a new map than it is for adjusting the code. And I, I really do think that we need to delineate some of these areas that we think might develop differently, especially the commercial ones. But if we think that the RV area near the town center and the Collins projects and stuff like that, might, we might be, um, wanting to maybe not have the requirement that somebody lives there, or maybe, whatever, whatever it is that we want. We're not talking about those specifics now, but if we think we want that area to develop differently than other RV areas, I think we ought to identify it before we forward this plan, because it's very hard to change the map, and it's much easier to adjust the code. It's a totally different standard.
But just as, just clear, for clarity's sake, when we're doing the comprehensive rezoning, uh, it's very easy to draw new districts and new boundaries. It's only after you complete, you know, after you complete your zoning map, then it becomes difficult. It's a higher standard that has to be met. But, um, but when we go to do the comprehensive rezoning, which means completely doing a new map, uh, it's, it's not diff, it's as difficult as changing the text in the code. It's, it's, you, you, everything is open and on the table for the planning commission and the council at that point. Just as an aside, Lori...
I'm just, my, my motion is to invite at least the commercial area out, because we know Rollins, what the Chesapeake Station area is much different from the other commercial area. I would like that delineated differently. I think that's one of my things. It's a little bit further up, Chairman Brown.
Uh, well, let me put, uh, Commissioner Blackwelder, if you can put this into a form of a motion so that we can, uh, make a decision and move on.
Sharon Brown, it's, it's on your list. It, it's just, you skipped over it a little bit, because I think you maybe thought it was hard.
No, Lori, I have a screen open up. It was my fault. I have the agenda up. I'm moving this, yeah.
Okay, so if you go up, please, um, back, back up a couple. Two more, okay. Okay, um, I think we talked about all of those until number 13. I have a motion to, so, um, this would be the general, okay, so I think this is the motion, commercial, okay, so this is a, a general motion, and this is how I am, I'm not talking very well. These are the categories I'm recommending. In the commercial category called neighborhood commercial, which you already have, I would like to take out the word restaurants and change it to small cafes, bakeries, or eateries with limited seating and offices, because restaurants can be really big, and I don't know if we necessarily want more restaurants, other than, I mean, obviously, you know, we want to support Mama Lucia's, um, or whatever comes in there after goes for sale, but I don't know if we want to, um, signal that we want to build restaurants within our neighborhoods.
All right, motion, the motion is to remove restaurants, correct? Uh, are you on mute, or am I?
I'm on mute. Yes, that's the motion. The motion is the text amendment that's highlighted there in the, for this one, the commercial category that is already existing in Chris's plan called neighborhood.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Okay, round seconds for the motion.
Can I, can I, can I ask a question, though?
Yes, go ahead.
Lori, is this the one that you were talking about, also not allowing residential on, on the top of?
So I'll get to that, that's, that's coming up.
Did you not want to include that in the mo, want to include that in the motion?
I have, I have a separate motion for that one.
Okay, okay. All right. I, I'm okay then. I'll, I'll go ahead and.
All right. So, is there any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor of removing restaurants in the, uh, section that Commissioner Blackwelder has recommended?
Aye.
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 All right. Uh, Commissioner Greengold, did I hear you?
Oh, no, I was just asking if, um, we were going to also talk about the residential. You know, we were talking about commercial, allowing residences above.
Well, we've got a motion on the table and four votes. Do you vote aye or no?
Oh, I'm sorry. I voted yes. I'm sorry. I voted yes. I'm sorry. I thought we were past that.
I believe that's unanimous. So, moving on.
Okay, so let's go down.
All right, so.
On the agenda.
So you'll have to point out where we're at, because I'm, I'm a bit.
I know. Um, Chris, could you scroll down, please? Or whoever has the agenda up?
Uh, that would be Chris, I think.
It's me.
Okay. Can you go down to 13, please? Or just down a little bit on this page, please?
Down further?
Yeah.
What number are you looking for?
Well, I'm on 12, but it, it has something under this bullet here. If you just scroll slowly, I, I can say stop.
I'm sorry. What I see on my screen is, there's a bit of a delay, I suppose.
Okay.
Do you see number 13?
So, my screen stops where it says offices on what we just discussed, and so I need to see just a little bit further down.
Do you see that?
I don't see. Does anybody see any movement?
Jan, what do you see on the, uh, screen?
It stops with primary example uses retail, restaurants is flash through, mall cafes, bakeries, or eateries with limited seating offices. That's where it ends.
I don't know why. Okay, here it is. So I have it's, I'm, I have up on my screen what is that you just said, Kathleen. Um, it's number 12, page 13, general land use categories.
Yes.
Eyes, commercial categories, as indicated.
Right.
But Lori wants you to go down further. She wants you to go down to the next one, which is, um.
Commercial category.
It's town after neighborhood.
Okay, I'm there.
It's, it's not showing yet, Chris.
Well, I.
Still no.
Maybe someone else.
Chris, do you want me to try to share my screen?
Okay, sure.
Thank you, Holly.
Sure. So, we're trying to get to 13?
Yeah.
Uh, just above.
Yeah, go up just 13. Um, one more? Uh, okay, there we go, right there. Okay, so that's just, um, an edit in the commercial category that Chris already has called town. Um, the edit is insert small business centers and insert offices as another use. That, that's, you know, probably just maybe way too detailed, but it's just two little edits to that purpose and primary example uses.
Is there any, uh, any discussion? Anyone opposed? All in favor, so move on.
Okay. So this next one is a bigger change, because it creates a new district. Um, I, oh, go back up, Holly, please, a little bit further. Right there. Thank you. Um, so I didn't propose to change to any of the wording on the maritime, um, but I did propose that we add a category called commercial plaza, and we, um, draw the map to show that as being the Chesapeake Station area. Um, and the, the purpose of that is just to retain it as is, not to complicate the code. Um, you know, we can keep all the same uses, but I view that area as being very different from area called town and the area called, um, called neighborhood. Uh, some of the areas called town allow the residential above. Um, I don't know that we want to let a grocery store anywhere but there, um, which is another good reason to have it that area zoned differently. I just think that's a different area. I don't think it's too big of an ask to say add this new zone, draw the map, you know, draw a line around that, that area, the Chesapeake Station Plaza, and call it that. I think that's, you know, it's easy to do, and I think it will uncomplicate our effort in code writing.
Lori, when, are you referring under this category, commercial plaza, for the town, the only, um, requisite that would fit that would be Roland, the shopping center there. Is that correct?
That's correct. I'm, I'm just wanting to retain that as a separate zone as the other commercial zones, is my goal in, in making this zone. It's just to identify that as being different from the other commercial zones.
How about Captain's Quarters, um, that building? It's right across the street from it.
Captain's Quarters, the large.
Where the, where the library.
Where the library is.
I mean, I, I guess when we talk about, uh, where.
It's a strip mall under the library.
Um, I don't know that we've discussed that. How would we want that to be zoned? Would we want to allow that to be denser, like Roland's Plaza, or would we want it to be less dense, like maybe the town commercial area might be?
We actually discussed this, uh, last meeting or the one before, about expanding it to include this couple properties behind it, and it was decided not to include those additional properties, correct, Chris?
Uh, that's right, and we've limited the commercial to just what's commercial now on the corner. And, uh, let me just say, if, if the commission wants to adopt Lori's idea and she come up with a new commercial category, I think it's best to include the Captain's Quarter parcel or property within that. Otherwise, we have the entire zoning category applied to just the one parcel. Um, and, uh, just as a matter of practice and zoning theory, you, you kind of don't want to have a single property zoning district that basically, you know, bring it, and besides, they're just right across the street from each other, uh, as well.
You also have Abner's Restaurant down that street. So.
Is Abner's a maritime or a commercial area?
Yeah, that's a maritime, uh, as the thing stands now.
But the examples given here are pharmacy, restaurant, fast food, and that was Abner's.
Well, I, I, I thought, Lori, you were going to talk about not putting housing on top of the commercial plaza.
Yes, and I think we decided that already. Um, my point in making the commercial plaza is that it will be so much easier to write the code if we have it as a separate desk district, because all we have to do at that point is not permit the residential on the land use table. If it's tied up with other commercial areas that do permit, uh, residential land use, that's when we get into all these conditions that you have to look up, and I just think that area is different from the other commercial areas. I just want to identify that difference. And, and for, you know, for the record, I would prefer we did that with the whole code. I really don't like having vast swaths of things be, uh, residential village. I think it's hard to write the code, but, um, anyways, that is a commercial plaza. I want to zone it as a commercial plaza, and I want no change in what we do.
So we have a motion to, uh, make that area a commercial plaza, delineating what the boundaries of that are still, uh, unclear. But anyway, that's the motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
I would like a discussion on, when you say purpose, provide commercial centers with adequate space and parking to provide essential services. So are you trying to say, allow commercial centers with adequate space and parking to provide essential services? Is that what you're trying to say? You're saying, allow commercial centers with adequate space and parking to provide essential services? You see how right now you, it should say, allow, the purpose, the purpose, you have purpose. Allow commercial centers with adequate space and parking to provide essential services. Isn't that what you're trying to say? Instead of provide.
Change the one word.
Yeah, 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 exactly. Yeah, change, provide, because right now I'm not understanding. You have provide twice in that sentence, and I'm trying to figure that out. Is that what you're trying to say, Lori?
That is what I'm trying to say.
Okay, so.
And, yeah.
Okay, all right. And then did you want to include in there that would not allow for overhead, um, second story, um, residents or overhead? Ah, I'm, I'm not able to talk either. Would you want to include in there, this is not to allow, um, residential above commercial in this area?
We can say allow non-residential commercial centers, or I don't, I mean, yeah, I'm happy to add that.
No resident, how about just no residential use? No residential use allowed, or residential use not allowed?
I'm happy adding that in. That is definitely my intent.
All right, so you, you change that first provide, you put allow commercial centers with adequate space and parking to provide essential services, and then you'd add, uh, resident, um.
Not residential, just.
No residential, no residential allowed. And then I'm good, and then I'm good with that, that category. And then I think you should allow Captain's Quarters to be part of that as well.
Okay. I mean, I like that. Um, I like all of those changes. I support them, and I can remake my motion, um, with, including Cindy's suggestion.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Commissioner Brawl, are you there?
Yes, aye.
All right, so unanimous. All right, I've said in my agenda that I propose that I would propose, uh, adjourning at nine o'clock. It's 9:24. Do I have a second to adjourn?
Uh, I will second that motion to adjourn. And I, and I would ask if we could bring in another date i- in early August to continue this, so that we can finish it.
That will have to, uh, any, any additional meetings, we have to work through the town administrator to see what dates are available, because it involves a lot of, uh, town resources.
Right.
Then I can, I can ask for that, but that would be, uh, separate.
Okay.
We have a, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor of adjourning?
Wait, one question?
Say again?
Uh, we're not claiming to be done, is that correct?
No.
Yeah, okay.
We have more on the, uh, on the chairman's list, and people can add to the chairman's list. And, uh, but, uh, if, if the motion passes, we still have, uh, public comment, uh, if there's anyone in the public that would like to comment on the, on the rest. So, um, anyway, uh, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
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 So it's unanimous.
Convinced you this time.
Now, uh, uh, I want to ask Chris if you could take a minute there and, uh, give us your thoughts on, on the path forward.
Oh, good.
Work.
I wondered if you'd be interested in concluding your deliberations for the time being at our next meeting, and, and allowing me to work with Holly to set a date for a public hearing. You still have time to deliberate, but at least you'll give the public an opportunity to hear, because we're really getting into, you know, more and more detail each time, and it's all, all great. I think the, the plan is getting more logically coherent all the time. It's getting better written, but we do have this moratorium, and it will be lifted. And that means you may get a surprise in the new year. It might include a number of site plans to review under the previous code, and that's going to be awkward. So I would just encourage everybody to, you know, even if, if the plan itself on, um, in two weeks, say, two weeks we meet, meet again, uh, is not entirely what you'd love to see, but it's good enough to release to the public. Let us do it. Uh, in that way, but then we could schedule a public hearing in October. You know, it's, it's going to have to be 60 days out.
Yep.
And, uh, so maybe the, the cover of the document doesn't look just right. Um, maybe, maybe there might be some small typos left. I hope not, but at least the document is there. It's prepared, and we're releasing it for public comment. And then once we get comment, we're going to obviously jump into this again and integrate comments and take comments, maybe one by one, or just the, the general gist of things. It's entirely up to how the planning commission wants to do it, but we have to have a meeting devoted to deliberating on the comments. So no doubt, there's going to be final changes. The beauty of that is that, once we set the hearing date, I can set this aside and start getting those text amendments to you and getting the new zoning map to you, and you could be working on that, uh, in September, uh, so that, once the plan gets, you know, adopted, right away, concurrently, you know, almost simultaneously, the council can take up a new zoning map. Um, so.
My, my question, Chris, is when are we going to get, uh, the whole package put together?
When the planning commission concludes its reviews. I, you know, I, it's, it's together now. The only thing that's not together are the various appendices, uh, and, and they all exist independent, and I could send them out to you tomorrow. Uh, but every time we add something, everything changes. There's a big formatting issue. Now we're going to have to go through and spend probably another, um, almost a thousand dollars to make amendments to the land use maps based on tonight's deliberations. I mean, there's real implications to the continual reevaluation of these documents. And, and the new map for the forest conservation, uh, this is going to be.
Are you saying that we have everything now?
Yes, you have everything you need now. You have the complete document.
We just received the last maps, or the first maps, I guess, yesterday. So we have, we have everything, including all of the proposed chapter 10 now.
Yes, you have all of chapter 10, and the maps that I sent you were just new professional versions of maps that were just, because I didn't want to waste the town's resources while we're continually deliberating. So the, the maps you have now are, are good. Of course, we're going to revise one of them, the land use map. But no, I, I, what I'd like to do before our next meeting is consolidate the changes you made tonight. But no, I, I, what I'd like to do before our next meeting is consolidate the changes you made tonight. And then put the land use section back into the whole report. So the table of contents flows naturally, add the appendices uh, and, and then put the cover back on it. And we can post that and then if there's any changes that you want to make to that at the last meeting, you, you can say, uh, we're directing the planning, town planner to make the changes and we're going to set the public hearing date for October fifteenth. Um, that, that would reflect real progress towards getting this, this thing in front of the town council, which is our goal.
Right, right.
Oh, well, we have to, we do, we have to get the whole package together before we, we can't present it to the public in pieces. So we've got to have a, uh, the whole package as one, one document that we can then present to the public. Uh, and you're saying that can be done when?
Well, I, I'm hoping we can have a work session as, um, Cindy said, in the middle of August, uh, you know, maybe, maybe two weeks from now, three weeks, whenever that, whenever it makes sense with the.
Yeah, you, you can work that out with, I'll, I'll ask, uh, the town administrator when that can be supported and, uh, we'll, we'll try and get a work session set up. Uh, but you're saying that you will have the, as a package that can present, be presented to the public as a, a total package at the work session?
Yes, yes.
And then, and then at the work session, we would decide on a date, uh, to, um, uh, forward it to the, whomever?
Yeah, you would decide on the, the date for the public hearing and, um, Holly and I can come prepare with several dates or what, what we think would be the best date, uh, but I think it's going to be in October. And, um.
Yeah, we need to get on it.
We release that document to the state and to the county and to North Beach and we'll have copies of it in town hall and it'll be on the town's website.
Okay. So is there any, any, uh, questions on that from commissioners?
I have a.
Um, and I'll work with Chris to see if we can't set that up. Uh, possible work session in August, uh, before our next meeting. I'm not sure if we have to, uh, present it to the public at a meeting or whether it can present it to the public at a work session, but then we'll figure that out.
Yeah.
Um, now, what I would ask, uh, the commissioners to do is, uh, think about, uh, maybe just take a sheet of paper and write down what, what were your goals in this comprehensive plan? What do you think is essential for our town? Uh, brief statements, if you will, whatever you want to do. But then, then as you look at the implementation chapter that, uh, uh, we will receive at the work session, if there is a work session, um, to, to see if, if your goals are adequately covered in the implementation. Um, we'll, we'll continue with my list here, which still has a couple of items on it, which I think will be, uh, done, but we'll, we'll work on that after, after we look at the composite package and, and figure about, uh, presenting it to the public. And then after we present it to the public, we'll continue working on whatever we think is necessary to resolve any final issues. Um, Chris?
Yeah, yeah, just one clarification. The implementation chapter has been drafted and, uh, was sent out to everybody. So, um, I added a number of, uh, paragraphs to it. It's sent it out, I guess it was yesterday, so it's, it's there, you have it. The, the new sections are highlighted in yellow on it.
Right.
Of course, it will be part of the whole package, but it's, it exists and it's done.
Right, but, uh, it'll be part of the whole package, but I'm asking the commissioners to take a look at this Chapter Ten and see if it does what you think needs to be done. Because that's, uh, in my view, uh, a critical, a critical, uh, part of this, this plan. The other thing I, I did ask Chris about, uh, in an email, which all of you should have gotten, was about, uh, all these orphaned properties that we've got throughout Chesapeake Beach and I think we've talked about it several times in meetings. And he's going to write something up, uh, which I presume will be in this composite package somewhere, uh, to, to talk about that as a, something to resolve for the town. Um, uh, I guess one off the wall question, Chris. When we, uh, as, as we get in the process here, and I don't know exactly where, don't, do we need to sit down with the Board of Appeals and, and brief them on, on the, this comprehensive plan? And because, uh, they, they have an impact on its execution.
Yeah, um, you know, we're not required to. It would, I think it'd be a nice gesture to invite them. Uh, we want to make sure that they are, you know, understanding the principles behind the plan. Um, when we get to amending the zoning ordinance, though, it'd be really critically important. And in fact, in most cases, uh, a planning commission will invite the Board of Appeals to a work session to discuss the proposed zoning amendments so that they could see what the planning commission's values are. So either way, you could do it at the comprehensive plan level. We can certainly send a special invitation to them to come to the public hearing, Mr. Chairman, to, to listen to the, the presentation of the plan and to offer comments.
Okay, that, that sounds reasonable. Invite them to the, uh, uh, public presentation and then, uh, and that will prep them for whatever input they want to put into as we work on the details of zoning amendments.
Right, right.
Okay, um, with that, uh, public comment, is there anybody in the public left on our? Uh, I see ten people that are here. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment?
Um, yes, I would. My name's Valerie Budan.
Yes.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you for, uh, listening in.
Oh, my pleasure. And, uh, I also want to concur with what the mayor said. Thank you for all of your effort. I just wanted to see if I had the understanding correctly regarding timing. So, timing and what I can expect. So when it comes to town council, we're going to get the comprehensive plan, which will go through a town council public hearing and a vote. We'll get the zoning map at the same time for a public hearing and a town council vote. And I thought we were getting applicable section two ninety changes in ordinance. So is my understanding, um, it's public hearing, so you don't have to answer, but that was, that especially I think we need the comp plan and. Changes.
Uh, some, somebody needs to go on mute. Thank, thank you.
At least that's how we did it last time, the comp plan and the zoning map with those comp plan ideals shown in the map that we voted on.
Yep.
Last comp plan.
Yes, Jeff, I am.
So I wanted you to hear that. And then my understanding for timing, when do you expect it to be introduced to town council? In October?
Well, that, uh, Chris is going to work on that and a, a schedule with, uh, Holly. Partially depends on whether we're able to schedule any work session, but we're certainly pushing for that.
Oh, I know. Your efforts have been amazing. Because the way I see the timing, and I could be wrong, I believe the moratorium runs out the first of the year. And so that means we have four months and if the, the planning is zoning hit August public hearing, we go to vote in September in planning and zoning. We go to town council in October for an intro and it would go to a public hearing and a vote in November, leaving us one month. If at any point, any of you all feel like, um, you're not going to make a deadline, this should be that we know, which would probably mean September, then we could start discussing the potential for an extension of the moratorium. And so I don't want you all to feel, you know, too rushed. I do want to get it done. But, um, I think have, you know, we have four months, basically. And so just wanted you to hear what my public comment was is I hope to see the comp plan and, the comp plan and the zoning map come together. We'll be voting on them separately. But it should be a package. And ideally so with the planning and zoning ordinances, the changes, but I don't think that'll happen. And that was my comment. I think y'all are doing great. I appreciate your long hours and understanding the effort.
Okay, well, thank.
Thanks, Valerie.
Thank you very much. Um, is there any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, may I, uh?
Yes.
If there's any, my member of the public. I, um, I just wanted to kind of answer one of the questions that was raised about, um, the public hearing. I, just in case folks are listening to this video after the fact, the, it would be impossible for the planning commission to deliver the plan to the town council in October. You can, the planning commission has to provide for sixty days of public review prior to the public hearing. So that's why I said October is the public hearing date, soonest we can have a public hearing date. That would mean that the planning commission would meet again in November to deliberate on the comments it received. Uh, and if it only took one month to deliberate on them, fine, you could deliver the final plan probably in December and the council could perhaps introduce it in December or January. Uh, along with, we're pretty close to the, the zoning, zoning amendments. But no, this, we're, we're into the new year at this point, practically speaking, for the town council to take action.
Okay, well, those are the parameters we have to work within. They are, uh, that is the law, right? So.
Yes, that's, that's right.
So, um, uh, if there is nothing else, then, uh, this meeting is adjourned. I'll work with Chris and the town administrator on, uh, an additional work session as soon as we can get that going. Thank you very much. Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.